Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Waverne City Council held here at the council chambers with social distancing adhered to here Monday, March 23rd, 2020. One of the first things I wish to, on the agenda and wish to talk about is approval of the minutes of regular council meeting and strategic planning and priorities meeting held March 9th, 2020. Do you have a motion, please?
I'll move that motion, please.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor? Motion passed. I just wanted to make note, Mr. Mickel is absent from the meeting here tonight. Additions to the agenda?
Your worship, I have an addition that as recommended by the Director of Finance, due to the COVID-19, the City of Waverne implement the following amendments to water billing effective immediately and until August 31st, 2020. Defer all interest charges on late utility bill payments and defer all water disconnections due to non-payment.
And we just, you want to just put that onto the agenda?
Yes, as an amendment, yes, for 7D.
And the other addition, Mr. Chessel, you were wanting to have one more addition, talking about the dates in April, council dates in April, if you would, please, Matthew?
Your worship, that can come up in 7C, the electronic meetings.
Okay. With that being said, all in favor of the addition? So carried. There's no public hearings and notices, no delegations, proclamations or petitions, reports of standing committees, there's non-consent agenda, there's a cash activity report and tax arrears report, could I have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'll make a motion that the following items on the consent agenda be accepted as presented. A, cash activity report, February 2020. B, tax arrears report.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Motions, first one, counts payable.
Yes, your worship, I'd be pleased to move the purchases in amount of $1,474,144.90 from March 6th to March 19th, 2020, be approved.
Your worship, I'll second that. Discussion? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. B, 7B, First Avenue Reservoir Cell Liner, Mr. Warren?
Thank you, your worship, this is a report from our Director of Engineering, Jen Mulkensen, going through our First Avenue Reservoir, so it's for a cell two liner. So First Avenue Reservoir and Pump Station is used for storage, distribution and maintain residual chlorine levels in treated water. The pump station has been in operation since 1958 with a capacity of 2 million liters. So there was a report done by Water Security Agency saying there's upgrades required for that. In January of 2017, we contracted MPE out of Regina to do design work for that reservoir project. In 2018 into 2019, we've been doing work on that First Avenue Reservoir and we've fallen into some issues with a liner that we need to have some work completed too. So it says here that during construction, both the contractor and consultant have worked to report and address a specific concern. There's leakage within the West Reservoir. Initially, voids and problem joints were identified and then recommendations and agreed actions involved select patching. Upon commissioning, testing the cells for return to service, Cell 2 was determined to still be leaking. Repairs were made in a different area, but we're still seeing rate of loss of water in that space. So working with MPE, our Director of Engineering, our water treatment superintendent, looked at two different options. One is install concrete to the cell at one meter up on each column, repair any cracks wider than 0.4 millimeters, put a patch and plug with an estimated of 20 meter of crack repair. And then it would be about 21 day install and cost would be $98,274. Option two is install a PVC tank liner on Cell 2 floor walls and columns for the entire span. It'd be about a 14 day install and it'd be $111,529.03. So they went through both options. The first option's a lower cost, but when they went through all the pros and cons, they thought that the PVC cell would be a better option moving forward as it would accommodate movement within the structure. And they are, with the engineering department, recommending that they move forward with option two of the PVC liner. This is not budgeted, so this would be an overage for this project.
Your worship, I'll make a motion that council approve Contact General Contractors Limited from Saskatoon, Saskatchewan for the installation of a PVC tank liner on Cell 2 floor walls and columns, walls and columns to span entire height to above overflow height at the First Avenue Reservoir and Pump House at a cost of $111,529.03.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, your worship, just a question, Matthew, so these are hairline cracks that are leaking and a little bit familiar with concrete, they will move again, but the liner, I've seen liners go in vast projects, so it's a heavy liner, fix it to the wall and then the ship. Is this, is this area of something that we are looking at down the future of replacing or upgrading?
So when we're looking at cost of replacing, the cost was quite large for that. And so the recommendation is to get a better life out of that liner or out of that cell is to put a liner in there to get a better life for that. Right now, I can't give you a price quote, but it's quite a heavy price quote, like you said, if we want to replace that whole system. But what should happen through asset management and long-term planning, they should look into that as a future thing for that reservoir.
But it wasn't on our, I'm thinking of the, something else, I guess, that we had plans on doing this next year?
Yeah, not within that, not within that reservoir.
Okay, I thought it was something different, but I didn't know, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. 7C, electronic meetings, Mr. Warren?
Thanks, your worship, so this is a request from administration as we go through our pandemic through COVID-19. So we've been reviewing the Cities Act, so within the Cities Act, it allows for mean through electronic means, so that's 99 within the Cities Act, so I'll read what the act states. So one, a council meeting, our meeting or council meeting may be conducted by means of telephonic, electronic or other communication facility if a notice of the meeting is given to the public, including the way in which the meeting is to be conducted. B, the facilities enable the public to at least listen to the meeting at a place specified in that notice and the clerk is in attendance at that place. And C, the facilities permit all participants to communicate adequately with each other during the meeting. Number two, members of council or council committees participating in the meeting held by the means of a communication facility are deemed to be present at the meeting. So what we're looking at right now is a Zoom meeting and we would actually have that broadcast live on our YouTube channel. It also provide an opportunity for access communications to also provide that live as we currently do for our council meetings as we do with the public right now. We would actually have this posted immediately after this meeting if this is agreed upon by council to let people know the process of how to get onto those meetings. Also, this would take place for our next council meeting, which would be on Tuesday, April 14th at 5:00 PM. We allow local media, we'll also be able to dial into the meeting and inquiries and announcements portion will be provided to them. We'll allow council to stay on for 15 minutes after the meeting for any questions from the public, or sorry, from the media. So for us, with everything that's happening with social distancing, it's a really prudent thing that I think council has to do moving forward. It's a means where actually we can get a lot of people to watch our council meetings hopefully as well, more than just access communications, we'll also have an opportunity through YouTube Live to provide that. We've done testing through our departments, it's worked well with us, we've done some testing on YouTube Live as well and it's worked well as well going that way, but it's something that I really was strongly encourage you guys moving forward.
Do you have a motion?
Yeah, thanks, your worship, I'll make a motion that as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and the state of emergency in the province of Saskatchewan, the Waverne City Council hold all future regular council meetings by electronic means as authorized under Section 99 of the Cities Act until further notice.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion?
Thanks, your worship, to the city manager, appreciate your diligence here in getting this into place as quickly as you have so that we don't have to continue to do this. I just, I want to make sure that folks understand that they'll still be able to see council meetings, they'll still be able to interact with us, it'll just be a little bit different and that you'll be patient with us as some of us are maybe going to struggle a little bit with the technology, so thank you.
Yeah, electronic means will be different, Council Richards, you won't get to see all your guys' faces during that, it'll be a lot of stuff that's up on the screen as we go through. I really think it's the best thing moving forward, it's an easy medium to do and it meets all our requirements to make sure that the public knows what we're talking about within those meetings and it gives our partner within access communications an opportunity to provide that service back to their viewers and also for us to work with Discover Waverne and Waverne Review to make sure that we can still get reporting out to the people in the public. So I think it's a great method, it's something that, you know, as time moves forward, we don't know how long this is going to be, but I think it's something that we should look at and continue to do as long as we have to.
Mr. Bailey?
I was just asking, Matthew, we're going to have a practice run before that for I know which button to push on my computer.
Yeah, well, we will run a practice run with you guys as council members so you guys understand the process, the app that you have to download, all those different things. Adam Hoffert, our PR coordinator, will do a great job as well, getting a hold of the public and letting them know how they can access onto there, he'll have a step-by-step process of, one, where our YouTube channel is, two, he, actually, we might even do something with the media so they can go through and practice run at two and troubleshoot and go from there.
Mr. Hoffert was nodding his head behind you thing and everything's in good shape, so.
It's a little different when he's behind me, though.
Yeah.
Mr. Chessel?
So your recommendation, Matthew, is to continue on our two meetings a month, I guess in summer we'll go down to one and handle them electronically going forward for now?
Yeah, Council Chessel, I really think during this time, it's, if we can stay to a regular agenda is to make sure that we have business as usual as much as we can during this time, it's the best thing to do. You know, we have to give notice if we are going to change our meetings and I think right now, based on the most of evening scene tonight on council agenda, business as usual for me, nothing changes for me right now, we still have to operate the city, we still have to provide those services to our residents, we still have to go through our budgetary things within there as well. I think we stay the course with our council meetings and if the time comes where we feel like we have to change that, we have to go through that process as well.
Sounds good.
Very good. Do you have a motion? That's it, ready? So call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. The discussion will go on longer than I planned, so we'll move forward with electronic meetings. D, 7D, now, Mr. Van Betje, utility billing, COVID-19?
I'll speak for that, your worship, so there's a report from Director of Finance, Laura Mousal, in regards to COVID-19 again, they proposed some changes to our billing that we do for our up to August 31st. They want to defer all interest charges on late utility bill payments and also to defer all our disconnections due to non-payments. So for us, we would stay to the monthly billing at this time, we would review that if we have to and send out late notices to the customers responsible for the usage and payments. Our pre-authorized payments would continue as we have done before and then we'd make our arrangements with staff if we have, or with the public if we have to and that would go through our finance department. So we're just requesting that two things, right, that one, we defer all interest charges on late utility bills and two, defer all our disconnections due to the non-payments at this time.
Mr. Van Betje? Do you have a motion?
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that the Director of Finance defer all interest charges on late utility bills, payments and defer all water disconnections due to non-payment effective immediately and until August 31st, 2020.
Your worship, I'll second that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Or did you wish? Sorry about that. Introduction of bylaws, bylaw 2020-3413, extend assessment rule?
Your worship, that's me again, so we're just going through the Cities Act, so SAM has not sent out the numbers for the city of Waverne's assessments for 2020. The process for preparing the assessment rule for the mailing of the 2020 tax notices will be past the required date of April 1st, 2020. Extension of the date of May 31st, 2020 will be more than enough time to prepare for the assessment rule, so this is something that Teresa Hicks, our city assessor, is requesting of council tonight. We just need time to make sure there are not errors or changes that need to be looked at in applying the mail rate and processing the numbers and preparing the tax notices. So we've made a motion, this is a requirement through the Cities Act to make sure we do the proper process for that.
Do you have a motion?
Yes, your worship, I'd like to move that the bylaw 2020-3413, a bylaw to extend the assessment rule from April 1st to May 31st, 2020, be read a first time.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor?
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that the bylaw 2020-3413, a bylaw to extend the assessment role from April 1st to May 31st, 2020, be read a second time.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously.
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that bylaw 2020-3413, a bylaw to extend the assessment role from April 1st to May 31st, 2020, be given three readings at this meeting.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously.
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that bylaw 2020-3413, a bylaw to extend the assessment role from April 1st to May 31st, 2020, be read a third time and passed.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Number B, bylaw 2020-3409, amend water rates schedule.
So I was talking a little on this, your worship, so we're looking for second, third readings tonight in regards to the water rates and the sewer rates. We present that on March 9th. It's council discretion what you guys want to do with those readings as we move forward. If you guys have any questions in regards to what was presented to you on March 9th, please let me know. We, within the City Hall, have not received any comments back on this to date.
Mr. Richards?
Thanks, your worship, I think just in light of the conditions right now, I'll make a motion that the second and final readings of bylaw 2020-3409, a bylaw to amend the Water Works bylaw for the City of Waverne and bylaw 2020-3410, the sewer bylaw for the City of Waverne for the purpose of increased rates, be postponed to a future meeting at council.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion?
Just on that, when it's deferred, as you guys know, it's 24 months is when we can come back for that, you know, within that time for the second, third readings. So just you're aware that that's the process and we go from there and the direction will be received from council administration as you want to move forward with it.
Thanks, city manager, yeah, we know that we have to get back to this within 24 months or it has to start over from ground zero, but we've got two years and I appreciate you looking into that for us this afternoon so that we had time to kind of make sure we weren't going to put ourselves in a spot. That's not to say that we don't think these rates are going to be the right rates for us, this is to say that maybe now is not the time to be discussing that.
Call the question, all in favor? So moved, it'll be deferred until a later date. No unfinished business, new business? Mr. Warren, regional water project?
Your worship, I'll declare conflict and step out for this.
You still have a quorum, so go ahead, Mr. Warren?
So wait till... Thank you, your worship, so SAS Water has contacted City of Waverne to see if the municipality is interested in being a part of a regional water project. So SAS Water is in the process of developing an application for the investing in Canada infrastructure program, so they're allowed to actually do a regional grant, so it's not a requirement of the municipality to do that grant, it's a regional grant that SAS Water would do. Time frame's pretty tight, right now, they have a due date of March 31st of 2020, so we're looking at next week is the application deadline under drinking water category for the proposed regional project. So the purpose of the project is develop a regional system that'll provide safe, sustainable and reliable drinking water to Waverne and several nearby communities and rural municipalities. The benefit of the project includes fostering a regional partnership, strengthening community relationships in the area, providing access to safe and clean water in the region and providing quality water for the people and residents in the area. It'll also support economic development and future community growth for our area and the areas around us, reducing the environmental footprint through the development of a regional system and keeping the project affordable for all community members involved. So SAS Water has had discussions with neighboring communities and rural municipalities and has been determined that the best collective need is to address the state of water infrastructure and that doing this is most mutually benefit to have multiple communities do this. So the required information they need from us in and before the March 31st deadline is, one, the City of Waverne Community Plan, our community plan is not approved yet with everything happened with COVID, we've held off on that a little bit, but within that, they're looking for future population projections, which I can provide back to them, the permit to operate, which we have, raw water quality to date, consumption notifications within the last three years, raw water quality data, a lot of support from council, a council resolution, which they'll be looking for from council tonight, treated water quality, the number of boil precautionary and precautionary drinking water devices within the last 12 months, downstream use and that's, and impact of this, impact of the study, that's if applicable, parallel growth plan if applicable and water system assessments. So going through the means that we've had with SAS Water and information provided to us to date, as this is more of just an exploratory view if they want to see within this grant, I recommend that City of Waverne explore the possibility of regional water in a project and provide SAS Water with the needed information from the city for the ICIP grant application.
Mr. Van Betje?
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that the Waverne City Council explore the possibility of a regional water project and provide SAS Water with the needed information from the city for the ICIP Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program grant application.
Your worship, I'll second that motion. And is that enough in that motion to give a letter? Okay, Mr. Bailey?
Yeah, I'm really excited about this, Manager Matthew, for us to partner up with the people here to assure of a quality water supply for the City of Waverne long after I'm around, that's for sure, on this earth, and that's something that we started looking at, I remember, six, eight years ago and it got kind of put on the wayside and now it's back on the table and I really think the city needs to do its due diligence to do whatever we can to get this going and support the project in full. The benefit of it is for everybody, but the benefit I see in it is strictly for the city to have water 50, 100 years from now.
Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. If you could, Mr. Richards? Inquiries and announcements, anything from Mr. Warren?
Only thing from administration is we're working our hardest as administration through what's going on right now with COVID-19 and we're working closely with our provincial partners through this and with our other cities and with other municipalities and right now, our goal is to provide the best service to the people in Waverne and to make sure that as things continue to change, we continue to change with that and provide the best we can to the public. So the biggest thing for us right now is trying to stay ahead of that curve and asking people to socially isolate as much as you can and to follow the right proper protocols, so that's the only thing I have, your worship.
And just to, anything else? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. It's that time of the year that I kind of bring to attention is everybody, the number of bikes on the road, young people out, they're not in school, bike safety is really important and so I just would ask our citizens to take extra consideration when you see somebody, see these young people riding a bike. Ironically, as coming down to City Hall, there was four or five of them on a bike, they took up the whole road on Douglas Road and this one young lady literally was texting, riding her bike. So the parents have got a responsibility here to make the children aware, give them the little extra education, but to those drivers, let's pay a little attention to them and keep our city safe and our children safe, thank you.
Yesterday, I released a video on behalf of the city council and the administration and on social media, just wanted to do another little bit of a speech here and talking about what we as the city and the city council are working on through this whole COVID-19. We've been following the direction of the federal and the provincial governments during this pandemic, the City of Waverne will be adhering to these measures as our top priority is the health, safety and well-being of our community and our employees. We're focused on maintaining city services, this means services such as fire, police, garbage collection, water treatment, et cetera. As we've indicated in the press release last week as well as social media and our website, we have closed our city-operated facilities to the public in order to reduce the spread of the virus. Your efforts with social distancing have not gone unnoticed. We want to thank you for doing your part to prevent the spread of the virus. It is also really great to see the, it is also really great to see the community come together to support one another and local businesses during these uncertain times. We recommend again what Mr. Warren talked about, taking the following precautions, washing hands with soap and water frequently, cover your cough and sneeze using a tissue or the inside of your elbow, avoid touching your face and stay at home if you're sick. If you're feeling sick, we encourage you to use a self-assessed tool developed and provided by the Health Ministry to determine if you need to be tested for the COVID-19. The next step is to call the health line by dialing 811 for further direction. As this situation evolves, the City of Waverne will continue to provide regular updates as they're available through our website and social media. We also want to encourage all residents to utilize sources from the federal and provincial governments as this will contain the most up-to-date and accurate information. Mr. Van Betje?
Thank you, your worship. I know we've talked as a council how we were going to communicate to the public and I wondered if our city manager, Warren, could explain to the public why the, the chosen the process we are and how it's going to happen.
Thank you, Councilor Van Betje, so the biggest thing for us and like Mayor Roy just said, following what the federal and provincial governments direct us to do is the most key things we go through this process, so what we do is we provide updates, press releases through our local media, we use our social media to provide information as well, but like I said, the key thing for us is to make sure that we follow what the promise tells us, they have the health professionals in place that can provide us the information we require. They have the health professionals in place that can provide us the information we require. And so once again, for Adam Hoffer, he's been busy providing stuff out to the public, working with Mayor Roy to provide information out to the public, working with me to provide information out there. Every day at 2:30, the provincial government provides an update. We hear that information, we see that information and we make sure that we have the most updated information, especially if everything's changing from time to time. You know, if we look at social distancing and gatherings who went from 50 to 25 and who knows if it continues to go down. So the biggest thing for us is to make sure that the proper information's out there, to use our website, our social media platforms, our press releases through the media and make sure that everyone's as informed as possible as we go through this process.
Any further questions, announcements?
Seeing none, again, to the citizens of Waburn, we're all working together, we have city council, our city staff, city administration, we're all working together to help us get through this time of the virus. We don't know how long it is, it'll be up to, again, the provincial people and the federal government to tell us how long the self-distancing and the shutdowns are, but we thank everyone for maintaining peace and calm. We ask you again, do not hoard and stockpile supplies, there's enough for everybody to go around. We want to make sure that there is enough. Help your community out, help the people that are shut in and we look forward to seeing you again at the next council meeting. With that, there's no notice of motions and we call this meeting adjourned.